Record a meeting to order. Where on please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a prayer.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, first of all, we ask for special blessings for the sick and shut-in, the healing and the mending, including Councilman Jones who is not with us right now. Special prayer for him as well as special prayers for all of us, especially, you know, those of us in the city of Lawrence. We ask that you guide us as we go through taking care of the important business of our city. We ask that you place a hand on us as we go about moving from this point forward. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Termination of quorum. We do have a quorum. Comments of council members, special recognition resolutions.
Mr. President?
Councilor Wells.
Yes, after the failure of my two proposals, I think five and six, I would like to withdraw them at this time. And I would like to just do a little more further work on them if I may.
You call for withdrawal of proposal number five and six.
I'd like to have a follow-up on that if I may.
Councilor Allen.
Thank you very much. One of the things that was a plus and a positive on the number six with regard to the amusement fees and that type of thing, we were able to connect the dots in terms of that particular business and their concerns as it relates to the city. And if I'm not mistaken, they should have met sometime today to discuss, you know, some possibilities for the future. So you might want to, you know, have a second comment on number six in particular because that one is still alive. But the administration is working with the business owners to come to some resolve and some resolution on that.
Right, that's my understanding as well. I know that the DPW director met with the two business owners that were here at the code meeting after -- I did not, I was not privy to what the outcome of that was. So I thought that I would offer my services to revise it. And my understanding is they're not going to repeal it as we originally had spelled out. We're going to probably just reduce it. And I think that might be acceptable to all on board. I would like to say however, on behalf of proposal five, my intention on proposal five was we have a building that is basically dilapidating before our very eyes. It's been vacant for years. We have people that want to buy it. And I thought it was a win-win situation that we could sell this building, we can then have a business move into this building. And I'm sure they would refurbish it and clean it up and fix it up. And then they would also be contributing to the tax base from this business. And the proceeds of this, of the sale of this building could then be used to build a designated animal shelter on some given city piece of property. Unfortunately, everybody seems to want to get hung up on how are we going to operate it? Well, there's a number of ways. But, you know, this was all discussed a year ago, over a year ago. So it's all been, you know, it's all old news and it's all old discussion. In the code meeting, I was asked about, you know, what were the particulars of those conversations? Well, you know, it's been over a year. So that's why I didn't want to make this so convoluted that we would just take this in phases and steps. I know that the mayor wants to possibly give it to some entity to operate a shelter. Well, I understand that. But they still are going to need a structure in which to do that. This building on Shalen Avenue was designated as a animal shelter by the previous council. If we sell it, if we take the money and build another building and we do it on city property, we are out no money. It doesn't cost the taxpayers one dime. And that was one of the other arguments that I heard about it. You know, it's go, we can't afford it. There's nothing to afford. It's, we're just taking, you know, from this pot and putting it into this pot. But the other pot is one that we can actually utilize as an animal shelter. So I want to rewrite it and try to clarify it. But I will have to say this, that I still at this point see no point in trying to determine how we're going to operate it. First, I'd like to get the structure built. And then we cross that bridge, get this hurdle done, and then move on to the next hurdle. To me, that makes more sense because if we start doing all this whole entire from start to finish, I don't think we'll ever get off of square one. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Point noted, Councilor. Yeah, I was just making reference to the other ordinance that was on the table. Point noted. Thank you.
Okay. Any other councilor? All right, move right along. Signing of the vouchers, approval of claims and authorization of payments. Is there a motion on the floor to accept, pay the bills?
I make the motion.
Councilman Freeman?
Second.
Second, Councilor Chavez. Any discussion? All in favor? Show of hands. Any opposed? Unanimous? Pay the bills. All right, what we're going to do is add in comments of the committees.
Report to the committee.
Reports of the committees. Thank you. At this time, it's not on the agenda. That was just a typo or not a typo. Yeah, so if it's okay with anyone, we just add reported committees in there. All right. At this time, I think we have code.
Yep, we have three items that we went through two nights ago, actually. Proposal number four, establishing a policy to promote the utilization of minority-owned and women-owned businesses that the committee recommended, recommends to the full council to pass that.
Okay.
Proposal number five and six, as Councilor Wells has indicated he is pulling, but the committee did not recommend either one of those to the committee. They were poorly researched, poorly presented, and the administration was not on board with either. More in particular, proposal number six, it was way too restrictive in terms of what was in the ordinance itself. And the money, the funds that we would receive from that sale would have to be exclusively used for an animal shelter. And the administration said clear as day that they do not anticipate in the near future of having the ability to operate a humane animal shelter. So this ordinance, we're really excited that you took our, I guess, advice and going to reword and rework these two proposals. Thank you.
All right. Any other committees needs to report? At this time? All right. Down to unfinished business. We have proposal number four, 2017.
Proposal number four, 2017, introduced by Councilor Giles, a proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, establishing a policy to promote utilization of minority-owned, women-owned, veteran-owned, and disability-owned business enterprises for public works projects, procurement of goods and services in the city of Lawrence.
Is there a motion on the floor? Proposal number four.
Mr. President.
Councilor Giles.
I would like to make a motion for approval of proposal number four.
Motion on the floor for approval. Any one second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wheeler. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. President.
Oh, Councilor Wells.
I just had a couple of quick questions on this. To my understanding, there is already a, an ordinance on the books for a minority-owned, what we're trying to do here. So is this to take place of that? Is, to my understanding is we're just revising the existing ordinance. Is that right?
Councilor Giles, if you would.
I'm not aware of any minority business or disadvantaged business participation goal ordinance in the level of procurement or anything that has never been brought to my attention.
And I guess my next question is, has anybody, or has there been any complaints filed with the city with any unfair or unequal treatment of anybody that you know of?
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
It's not, it's not about discrimination. It's about encouraging the city to do business with minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses, business of disabled business owners. And then that's also, if you read in the ordinance, what it also sets up too is for us to be able to quantify how much work that we are doing with these businesses. And the city would have to do a report, you know, at the end of the year to show it's, you know, whom that it may be working with. It is a goal that, that many cities in 2017 has.
Any further discussion? By a show of hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Is unanimous. Proposal number four approved. Proposal number five, 2017, has been pulled. Proposal number six, 2017, has been pulled. Proposal number seven, 2017.
Proposal number seven, 2017, introduced by Councilor Chevlot, a proposal for an ordinance establishing the rates and charges for the use of services rendered by the waterworks of the city of Lawrence, Indiana.
Okay, so at this time, we will have council legal to explain this process as it is written, proposal number seven. My understanding, we do have an amended version to proposal number seven. And I will have our legal explain the process and how this is going to go about.
Thank you, Mr. President. Where we are at in the process is that the ordinance says that were originally introduced as proposals number seven and eight at the April 3rd council meeting, went to the committee as a whole. And that committee recommended a do not pass at that time. After that recommendation was voted upon, the rate consultant of the administration, UMBAA, presented an alternative rate structure for the council's consideration. But at that time, there was not an amendment with a new rate structure before the council. So what we have this evening and has been circulated to the council, but it's not formally before the council at this point, is an amendment to proposal number seven, which reflects a new set of rates and charges reflecting the updated report that was newly received from UMBAA. In order to get those amended newly proposed rates before the council, there would need to be a motion this evening by a council member. And that would need to be voted upon and accepted. And at that point, the president could then place the amended proposal number seven before committee, along with, we think it makes sense, the proposal number eight, which has not been proposed to be amended. That is the bond ordinance, which is related to the rates. And therefore, that also could go back to committee as they are considered together for committee as assigned to make a recommendation. Indiana law also requires before new rates can be approved by the council that a public hearing be held. We have from the administration, public notice in the Indianapolis Star that has gone out, I believe, today with the amended proposed rate structure for public hearing to be held May 1st at 6:30, which is before the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Once that public hearing is held, the council can then make a final decision, if they so choose, at that May 1st meeting. Are there any questions that I could answer other than that?
So basically, we could just put proposal number seven as it is according to the agenda back in committee as a whole.
You could, or you could accept the amendment, which would require a motion.
Okay, so being that it's not on the agenda, and we could go ahead and move from that since we already have basically copies of electronic.
Yes, sir, there are electronic copies circulated to the council. And the clerk also placed paper copies in the back for anyone that would need a copy as well.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Councilor Giles would like to make a motion.
Mr. President, as you know, I made a motion last week during the committee as a whole to not pass the original rate increase ordinance and related bond ordinance as presented to the council. And that motion was supported by the majority of the committee as a whole. As a result of our efforts to work with the administration to lessen the impact of the burden of the rate increase on our community, the committee was presented with that alternative plan that the, that our legal counsel just spoken of last week by UMBAA. This, this proposal will lessen the impact on the water rate increases and phase those increases over a longer period of time. The administration has presented us with the, with the amended proposal. And so as of today, I ask, Mr. President, that I would like to make a motion to amend proposal number seven reflective of those amended rate structures in proposal number seven.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. There've been first by Councilor Giles, second by Councilor Chevlot. Any further discussion on the amended version of proposal number seven?
Mr., oh, ladies first.
Councilor Chavez?
There are just, there's some typographical things that need to be just updated in the amended proposal.
Right, so what we're voting on is to, to not pass the amended version, correct?
No.
We're voting.
Just accept the original.
The original version. We are voting to accept the amended version so that we can move on the amended version.
Okay.
Versus the original.
Original. So at what point?
We're all clicking.
At what point?
I think she's saying that there are typos in the amended ordinance.
Yes, yes.
Okay, what was circulated corrected, the two typos that I was aware of in the, where the periods and the commas were mistaken in the rate proposal. And that is what, the corrected amended version is what was circulated. Are there additional, Councilor?
Um, well, for one thing, we didn't meet on the 13th. I believe we met on the 12th.
Right.
So we just need to make that change. And then, would you have any other ones on yours? Yeah, I think that would be good. Just for the record.
Put it right to the paper, that'll be published on Friday, is the amended version.
Okay.
That'll be in the paper on Friday.
Okay.
For the public hearing.
So we have a motion on the floor. Second by Councilor Chevlot.
Mr. President.
Discussion? Councilor Allen.
Point of clarification. So by accepting what's on the table right now, okay, I would like to ask council to give some clarification. And I guess my question is, you know, by accepting the motion that's on the floor, as a council, are we then accepting the amended version? Or are we saying that at that point, we can send the amended version to committee? Yada, yada, yada?
The water.
Right. I understand. Absolutely.
You are correct. Very good point, Councilor. This is not a vote substantively on the amendment. That vote legally cannot occur until after the May 1st public hearing. This is merely a vote to accept the amendment in a essentially amended proposal to put before you for new consideration, essentially. Does that make sense?
Thank you, yes it does.
Thank you.
All right. So for clarity, we're accepting the, we're considering the amended version for consideration only, consideration only, to go forward for further consideration. All right, motion on the floor. Second, any further discussion? All in favor? A show of hands. For consideration of the amended version to go forward for consideration. All opposed? Motion carry, six-two, to go forward for consideration. All right. So we absolutely clear on what we, what we just voted on. All right. The amended version will be published in the Indy Star starting tomorrow.
Friday. It'll be in Friday.
Friday, okay. Friday, okay, Friday, for clarity. So that will be the amended version. All right. Just make sure we're all tracking. Proposal number eight, 2017. Oh, as you were. Okay, we haven't finished business yet. So going back to proposal number seven, amended version, that will be assigned to committee as a whole. And we will look forward for, what, a week from today? Next Wednesday? How about that, that day is open?
About a calendar, the public assembly room. Today's the 19th, the 26th.
That'd be 26.
26. I'd have to look at the public assembly room calendar.
Okay.
I think it's open, but.
We'll get that, we'll get that out and at a time be mattered. It'll be sometime next week. We're looking at potentially next Wednesday. If that don't work, then soon, a day before or a day after, okay?
You want 6:00 or 6:30?
Well, let's do 6:30. Let's stay consistent with time. All right. We're done with business. Proposal number seven, correct? All right. Proposal number eight, 2017.
Proposal number eight, 2017, introduced by Councilor Chevlot, a proposal for an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation by the city of Lawrence, Indiana of certain improvements and extensions to the city's waterworks, the issuance and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the costs thereof, and the collection, segregation, and distribution of revenues of such waterworks and other related matters.
At this time, I would like, since we haven't had any discussion on proposal number eight, if the city council or corporate bond counselor would come and give some, shed some light about what proposal number eight is.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council.
Good evening.
Ordinance number eight is what we call a bond ordinance for provision and authorization of the bonds to be issued for phase one and series past that, phase two, phase three. Whatever is authorized in this ordinance is restricted by the rates that you adopt. So we could authorize a great amount of bonds, but until you have rates in place where SRF accepts those rates, you would only be issuing the bonds that would be put into place. There is a $20 million, $900,000 total figure in this bond ordinance. And that includes all of the phases that have been proposed by the engineering firm and by the financial advisor. It is to be issued in one or more series so that those bond issues will be much smaller than that amount and may never reach that total amount. It looks back at both the 2007 and 2009 bonds. These bonds would be on what we call parity with those prior bonds so that the revenues coming in go to pay debt service on all three of those items. What you have before you is an original copy, original draft, of the bond ordinance. I submitted that to SRF once it was introduced because they have to approve and look over the bond ordinance. I have probably 30 pages of basically minor comments back from them with a new attachment B, which was the financial assistance agreement. So before you tonight is a version that will be necessary to amend before it is finally adopted at May 1st meeting or whenever. So I will prepare that amended version with comments and provide that to your council tomorrow and allow her to circulate it to you with an explanation of what those changes would be and why the SRF has decided to require them. But in that sense, most of the changes were simply language or definitional changes that the SRF program has changed in the last couple of years. So that I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Counselors?
So just for clarification, the changes in the rates in amended proposal number seven, none of those need to be reflected in the bond ordinance?
That's correct. The bond ordinance says that you will provide rates sufficient to pay the debt service operation, et cetera. So the rates in proposal seven, phase one, only allow for the provision of about $8 million of that $20 million, $900,000.
Okay.
The additional rates would have to come in to be able to allow for other financings.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Sir, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So what we're going to do with proposal number eight is put that back in committee as a whole as well, okay? And then we can, when the changes come, then we can go ahead and make the adjustments and make the necessary decisions from there. Clear? All right. New business. Acceptance of uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement for Bob Jones. Is there a motion on the floor to accept?
So moved.
Councilor Wells?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wheeler. Any discussion?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Mr. President.
Councilor Allen.
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, a date has been set for, for that to be, I'm sorry. I got two things on my mind. I withdraw that comment.
Withdraw the comment, okay.
Mr. President.
Councilor Wells?
Councilor Allen, when is that date? Do you remember for that hearing? May the.
May 1st at 5:30.
Help me, Kathy. May the 3rd?
May 1st at 5:30.
First, May 1st at 5:00.
Full council.
Full council for zoning.
May 1st at 5:00 PM.
5:30.
5:30, and thank you.
Motion on the floor by Councilor Wells, second by Councilor Wheeler. Any further discussion? All in favor for acceptance of the uniform code of interest for Bob Jones? Any opposed? Is unanimous. Pass. All right, new business. Item number B, acceptance of the uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement for Sharad Freeman. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make the motion.
Councilor Wheeler?
Second.
Second, Councilor Allen. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Any opposed?
Here, abstain.
One abstain, okay. Okay. It passed. Comments of the administration?
I don't have any different comments.
All right, no comments from the mayor? Most adjourned?
Adjourned.
Counsel Wheeler? Second?
Second.
Counsel Allen? We are adjourned.